Good evening, everybody. Noting the hour and the presence of a quorum, I call the Acton-Boxborough Regional School Committee to order. Members of the public who wish to watch our meeting may do so online at Acton TV’s YouTube channel. It’s found at the top of our agenda. And this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on Acton TV’s website at actontv.org. A couple of quick notes before we move into recognition. So tonight, we have our budget hearing. So we’re going to do some stuff, mostly recognize some amazing people in our district, and then we’re going to call to order a budget hearing where I’m going to say a lot of the same things all over again. We’re going to talk about budget. We’ll have some opportunity for public input and participation as part of the budget. And then we’ll adjourn the budget hearing and return back to our regular school committee meeting. And I’m going to say this just a couple of times for people in the room, but so everybody understands. The budget hearing is the time where if you’re here to provide some public comment on topics related to the budget, please do so during the public participation or the public comment period inside the hearing. We’re not going to take public comment regarding the budget once we return to regular session and then have our standard public participation opportunities. I will say all this again when we get there and remind everybody. Just wanted to give everybody a heads up on that. One other thing that I want to just sort of recognize here at the beginning of the meeting, there’s a woman who’s extremely important to our lives, who keeps everything running very, very smoothly. She’s probably watching at home right now, and I want to wish a very happy birthday to Julie LaLumiere. So thank you, Julie, for everything that you do for us. The tables are always set perfectly. Everything is set. The right nameplates are in the right spot every time. And Peter always has cough drops and water hidden in a little table back here because of Julie’s amazing work. So thank you, Julie, and happy birthday. All right, with that, we’ve got some recognition. Peter?
We have slides that go with the recognition.
Wow.
All right, so first recognition of the evening, I’d like to ask Lauren Gould to please come on up, or Lauren Gould Donahue. Sorry, old habits die hard. And maybe the administration from Douglas would like to join. So Chairperson Klein and I are joined by our Douglas administrators, and we just want to congratulate Lauren Gould Donahue as the 2025 MAEA, which Julie didn’t spell for me, but that is the Mass Art Educator Association Elementary Art Educator of the Year Award. Lauren is an art teacher at the CT Douglas Elementary School in Acton, Massachusetts, for grades K through six. She advocates for student-directed learning and teaching for artistic behavior, which is one of the real curriculum models that Acton has been and Boxborough has been known for over recent years and really highlighted in the art educator world. In the Douglas studio, she creates an inclusive environment where students explore their identity as artists. So, you know, Lauren, I don’t know if you want to say a few words about what you do and, you know, tell the school committee and community a little bit about all the great work that you do and highlight some of the artwork.
Awesome, thanks. First, I just want to thank you for recognizing this tonight. I really appreciate it. Those that know me well know I spend a little bit too much time working, and I’m really passionate about choice-based, student-driven artwork, also known as TAB, which you all already explained. Thank you. So the reward was really validating. I also want to recognize our incredible K through six art department led by, for the last few years, by Celia Knight. We consistently collaborate and share lessons and ideas on so much of how I teach I learned and I get from them as well. For an overview of the award, it recognizes participation and presenting at both the state and national art ed conferences and those activities. They looked at leadership in the field and publications. I’ve led professional development on the studio habits and our curriculum. I’m on the TAB Inc. board as the secretary, and we work with art teachers around the world. And I’ve had two TAB advocacy pieces published. And I did read that an out-of-state national art ed associate, the affiliate for that, chooses the recipients, and they also look at our teaching philosophies and images of student and personal artwork. I just wanted to share that I find so much joy learning alongside my students and experiencing the flow and the magic that happens when they’re creating artwork that’s coming from their ideas and they’re exploring new materials. And I really feel so lucky to do what I do. In the past few weeks, I’ve been overwhelmed by the generous words and the celebrations of staff and students. A fourth-grade class wrote me a song. I almost cried. It was incredible. So I’m really grateful to work with such amazing colleagues and kids. Thanks.
So Lauren, we have a small certificate for you. Congratulations. Thank you for all you do and for representing AB, the entire art department throughout the district and all of our schools and community just so well. You are an amazing asset to the district. Your students are so lucky to have you, and congratulations. We’re going to just do a quick photo op now, so come on over. Okay, next, I would like to welcome up two of our high school educators, Lori Burns and Eliza Green. And then I would also like to bring up three of our high school students who we’re really here to highlight tonight. So if you would please welcome Ashley Gu, Kenzie Watson, and Nathaniel Kim. Come on up, you don’t have to be shy. You’re the ones everyone wants to see, so it’s okay. So, you know, I’m going to turn this over, I believe, to Eliza, right? To say a few words about our students here. And we’re recognizing them for having received multiple Scholastic Art Awards in painting, mixed media, sculpture, ceramics, and glass. So Eliza, I’ll turn it over to you, and you can say a little bit more about our students.
Thank you for having us. I’m Eliza Green, and this is Lori Burns. We teach visual arts at the high school, and we are here to join in congratulating some of our amazing student artists, Ashley Gu, Nathaniel Kim, and Kenzie Watson. The Scholastic Art Awards recognizes teen artists for their achievement through a competitive juried process. These dedicated student artists created, submitted, and received recognition for artwork that exemplifies the core, award’s core values: originality, skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision. In viewing these three artists’ works, their risk-taking in the pursuit of original compositions is a particularly impressive common thread. It is with great pride that we recognize the accomplishments of these student artists who received Scholastic Art Awards this year for artwork created in their studio art and ceramics classes at ABRHS. Kenzie Watson, Gold Key Painting. Nate Kim, Honorable Mention, Ceramics and Glass. Ashley Gu, Gold Key Painting. Honorable Mention, Mixed Media. And if you would like to see a little bit more of these students’ artwork as they become seniors, and this year in the senior show for Ashley Gu, along with graduating students across visual arts disciplines, their work will be on display at the upcoming Senior Art Show at the Village Works Gallery in West Acton. So stay tuned.
Congratulations to all three of you, and we’ll do a little photo op. Families, if you want to come up, you can actually come right up here and get a photo too, if you’d like, and you want the good angle. Say it’s embarrassing, but they really like it. I have a 17-year-old daughter, and I’m sure she appreciates it every time.
Look at your parents.
Congratulations, everyone. Thank you.
Congratulations one more time. Now’s the time, if you don’t want to stick around, feel free to sneak out. I am now going to call to order, because I’ve noted the presence of a quorum, the, oh gosh, noting the hour and presence of a quorum, I call the FY26 Annual Budget Hearing to Order. Again, members who wish to watch online may do so at Acton TV’s website, and we are still being recorded. So we have some detailed budget material already provided in our packet. There is a separate packet and separate agenda for our budget overview. In a second, I’m going to turn it over to Superintendent Light, who’s going to give us an update on where we are on the budget, including his presentation on the recommended budget. Following the presentation on the budget, we’ll take public input and public comment regarding all topics related to the budget and budget only. And then, once we receive the feedback from the public, we will adjourn the hearing and will return to regular session where then the school committee will deliberate and ask the superintendent questions on the budget. Like I said, I’ll just keep reminding us of what the plan is as we go along. So at this point, I’ll hand it over to Peter for an update on the FY26 recommended budget.
All right, thank you, Adam. I’m not going to go through, you know, all, you know, 140 slides you’ve probably already looked at. So what I want to do tonight is just give you an overview of some of previous slides, just to remind you of some key points, as well as give some updates of how the budget has shifted from the preliminary to the recommended budget that we are presenting to you tonight before we have an opportunity for public comment. You know, it goes without saying, and I think everyone here feels this, this has been an extremely disappointing and frustrating budget to develop, where I think we feel as though we are not providing our educators and schools with the tools and resources they need to be able to be their best for our students. I want to say that, you know, with a real level of sincerity, that that is probably the most frustrating thing to have happen as a superintendent of schools, as well as all of our team of leaders across the district, when you just don’t have the resources you need to do what you want to for kids. And so this has been a series of challenging choices. I’ll talk about some of those tonight, as well, along with some of the updates. So overall, in our schedule, we are progressing toward the final budget vote, and so we have our budget hearing that’s required by law tonight, where there’s an opportunity for public to make comments on the budget. I know we’ve been hearing high engagement along the way, and I’ll talk about that in a little bit. And then we move to our final budget vote, which is scheduled for next Thursday. And it really needs to be next Thursday because that has to be 45 days before the first town meeting. We have to be able to send our budget to the two towns to prepare the warrant articles. So again, budget hearing, we’re headed to the final budget vote. When we do get to the final budget vote, it is really noteworthy that the language in the regional agreement for the budget vote, it is 2/3 of weighted votes of the full school committee. An absent member is equivalent of a no vote on the budget, and that’s really important to understand, that in order to pass the budget, it has to be 2/3 of all the members, all 11, have to be voting on that, and it has to pass with that weighted majority. So I just want to make sure we highlight that because that had come up a few years ago on us, and it was kind of a surprise that we hadn’t anticipated. Key takeaways, you’ve seen this before. Obviously, some of the context is we’ve had declining enrollment over, you know, since regionalization, and we are expected to decline slowly in terms of student enrollment over the next eight years. And the number of classroom teachers and the teachers serving students most in our classrooms, and this includes art, music, PE, all of those unified arts, that has declined in proportion to the number of students we’ve had in the district overall. So lower enrollment, lower number of classroom-facing teachers. At the same time, we have a higher number of support teachers than we’ve ever had before because that has mirrored the increase in the percentage of our students who now are classified as having high needs. So, you know, we need to think about, we have been staffing our schools in response to student enrollment and the needs of our students. And, you know, just the last bullet we continue to say is, our ability to have developed and funded programs for students with disabilities in our schools is an opportunity for our students to be successful and to stay in their community and learn with their peers, and it also has saved our district money in avoiding cost of out-of-district tuitions, which have escalated well beyond what school budgets can afford. Four major strategies, I’m not going to go into the details of each one, but we really looked hard at class sizes across the district to make sure that we were programming all of our courses within school committee guidelines for this budget. And if something was under budget guidelines, we made the decision that that would have to be a reduction in this budget. That impacted mostly our secondary schools. We implemented a recommendation of the elementary budget task force that we had around reductions in the general education assistance. We talked a lot about the value that they provide and recognized that it was a hard decision that had to be made in this budget. We are going to closely need to examine our scheduling practices as we go into the next school year around our multilingual students and students with IEPs to make sure that we’re able to provide the services that we’re required to. We wish that in this budget, we were increasing the number of multilingual teachers that we have in our schools. We don’t have the funding to be able to do that, and so we’re going to have to be really strategic about how we schedule students. I think, you know, I actually had an opportunity to meet with a group of educators yesterday, and at the elementary level, one of the things they talked about that is hard for classroom teachers is the loss of some of the autonomy over being able to schedule their own schedules over the course of a day and having to follow a much more prescribed schedule at the grade level and at the school level, because they lose some of that freedom to be able to think about the responsiveness to their students. But as we think about how we allocate our staff around special education and multilingual education, if we don’t control the schedules for that, we end up burning out our staff who are providing all of those services that kids need because they have to be able to pull groups of students out in an efficient manner. So that’s just an example of how that real focus on efficiency impacts teachers in a classroom and that feeling that they have around being able to have some autonomy. Group two and tier intervention sizes, we’re also going to have to look at group sizes for those. As you know, we are proposing reductions in some of our tier-two and three supports in the district. We have not been able to restore them. I’ll talk about that in a little bit, but we will be looking at group size as well as we go into next year. Overall budget history, so what we are proposing for the coming year is a 2.11% budget increase. Just as a reminder, that includes the retirement of debt, so the, which is also, you know, the assessment from that debt that goes to the taxpayers is also a revenue source from the town that disappears. And so even though it’s a 2.11% increase, that’s actually over a 3% budget increase that, you know, goes to the two towns in terms of the actual impact on the assessments. We, over the last couple of years, we have dissolved the Acton Health Insurance Trust to move to a more stable, larger health insurance group. We were able to save some money by doing that, and so that’s a positive that has helped us a little bit in this year’s budget. We also took a position coming into this year that we would limit the use of reserves. Obviously, we had to pause on that because of needs to pay off liabilities from the health insurance trust. However, in the next year’s budget, we continue to not use any excess and deficiency. And so the goal of that is to really begin to rebuild the reserve accounts that we have, which is necessary for kind of long-term financial health of the district. I already talked about reductions in the general education assistance, and I already talked a little bit about scheduling at the elementary level that we’re going to have to think efficiently about. Significant finance changes that went into this, I already talked about the retirement of debt from the junior and senior high school building projects and how that would impact the budget. Health insurance overall was up 3%, or just over 3%. However, I want to note that the actual health insurance rate increase was 14.84%. We were very fortunate to have implemented an opt-out last year that saved about $660,000 on the budget, and so, you know, that is helping us mitigate some of the impact of that almost 15% health insurance rate increase. We had some attrition that we were able to have some savings on the budget as well. That does mean we are budgeting for a lower step in lane on, like, teacher experience for next year as we hire educators. We are not going to be able to hire educators with the same level of experience that we might have in previous years. It’s not a significant change, but it’s significant enough to help save us some money on the coming year’s budget. And then we had the vacancy factor. I’ve talked about that a lot. It was just a liability line sitting in the budget that we’ve been working to reduce. How has the budget changed? Preliminary budget that was presented to you was 116, 135, 080, so about $116 million. School committee increased that to almost, about $116.8 million. I want to just talk about how we got there to make sure we’re all clear about that. About $218,000 of that was from anticipated increases in Chapter 78 that were included in the governor’s budget that we felt was a safe budget proposal. $287,000, or almost $288,000 was anticipated increase is in regional transportation aid and charter school reimbursement when the governor’s budget was released. And then the school committee put an additional $150,000 budget increase in that is going to be assessed to the two towns in the budget. However, you also did that with the caveat, which is asterisked here, that if the state increases Chapter 78 over the governor’s budget, the amount that the towns are assessed additional to what was originally proposed in the preliminary budget would be reduced back to that original level through some of that additional Chapter 78. Anything beyond that, the school committee would obviously be able to retain, but you did make a commitment that we would return anything over kind of that preliminary assessment back to the towns if we receive additional aid. We were hopeful, I think, on February 8th that the addition of some of these monies might result in us being able to bring some staff positions back. I certainly left that meeting feeling positive about that, as did many members of our team, and I think probably many of you did as well. However, we have had a good number of employees now return to our health insurance who had previously opted out. There were changes across the state in health insurance markets, and, you know, we think that what some of our staff are feeling as their spouse’s health insurance comes up is that our health insurance is actually more favorable than what they’re now seeing in the private market. So we are seeing some people return. We also had to account for that change from what Maya had originally thought of a 12% budget increase on health insurance to the 14.84. So that ate up over $300,000. And then we have had about $330,000 in additional special education costs that have come onto the books in the form of tuitions since our original budget proposal in January. Sherry, you know, I talked about that along with our staff. We did not want to make additional budget reductions, so Sherry has gone through just a variety of lines in the budget and actually decreased some other lines in the budget to account for the offset that we needed to find in order to not have to reduce more staff. So that’s where we sit today, is, you know, we’re kind of holding firm at the original proposal that we had. We did not have the flexibility to add positions back. Want to just talk through, because I do think it’s significant what we have reduced and make sure we’re all clear about that. We’ve heard significant feedback from our educators, community members throughout this process, saying they don’t have the resources that they think they need to have. I take that very seriously, as I know all of you do, and have a lot of respect for our educators in the district and the work that they do every day. We have heard feedback certainly around, you know, our general education classroom assistance that we have in our elementary schools, and, you know, educators need to have that type of support. We’ve heard feedback around tier-two interventions and tier-three interventions and the reduction of those. We have heard feedback and significant feedback around the elementary special education coordinator position over at McCarthy Town Elementary School. I think we heard really important and significant feedback about that, and our leadership team has had multiple conversations since that original discussion. And ultimately, we have not changed the original proposal. However, I want to just explain a little bit of the rationale why. We are in, you know, a challenging and unique position again, where we are having to hire a special education director for the district. We have had multiple special education directors since I’ve been here, coming and going from the district. It is an extraordinarily challenging job, and the two candidates that were our finalists were both highly, highly skilled individuals with absolutely fantastic references from a broad range of stakeholders. However, neither of them have any experience in our schools, and particularly at the district level and looking at programs across the district too. As we thought about that, it’s really important that in order to help that person be successful, we need to provide that support at the district level in the form of continuity of that assistant director position. Also, by keeping the assistant director, it allows us to have a resource at the district level that we can then use flexibly across all of the schools as we might evaluate different needs that come up through the school year as we make this change, and we feel like we need to be able to be responsive to that. We also had made the decision that we committed to making sure that, you know, as we’ve talked about each school having a halftime coordinator, the Parker-Damon Building will have a 1.0 coordinator located in it, in the building, so that that individual has flexibility to be able to manage time across the two schools as they need to and be able to be responsive to needs of different programs as they arise. So, you know, it is not the solution that’s going to satisfy many individuals, and I just want to recognize that. I feel badly that we don’t have a solution for that. However, that is currently kind of the rationale, at least so you understand it, of why we’re continuing to maintain that. We continue to reduce another central office support position. We have a variety of stipends that we’ve already highlighted for you and some reductions in athletic coaching positions that were positions that some sports had that maybe other sports did not have, so we really just looked at making sure there were equitable distribution of coaching resources across sports. At the elementary level, I already talked about general education assistance. We talked about tier-two supports in the form of reading assistants and the math specialist. We were reducing through attrition a certified librarian and replacing that with a library media assistant, and we are just simply not funding a new K-section, even though we’re anticipating a slight increase in kindergarten enrollment based on NESDEC reports as a way of managing class size. At the junior high, we had already reduced an English teacher on one of our teams. This reduces three other positions on one of our teams, which means that we will have one team at the junior high school fully split of seventh and eighth-grade students on the same team. Just as a reminder, the seventh and eighth-grade students are not in class together. That’s not part of how this works, but the teachers will now be teaching multiple grade levels across the two teams. So just want to highlight how that works and the impact of that. And at the high school, primarily, this really looked hard at class sizes, and reduces two social studies positions, a math teaching position, and two English teachers. Though one of those English teachers was funded in the FY25 budget, but we chose not to hire it because we anticipated the current budget challenges that we would have ahead. So it’s not actually a person, but it’s a position that would have been budgeted. We are also reducing about two of our campus monitor positions and a 19-hour assistant in our STAR program. I wanted to give you a slide that you would not be able to read easily, you know, as a way of summarizing. I will just, you know, kind of highlight, if you can see the bottom line, what this, you’re looking at is the net change in staffing between FY23 and FY26. And if you look at total staff positions, all highlighted in the pink, you’re going to see that in FY23, we had the equivalent of 946.6 staff, and next year, we are budgeting for 856.7 staff. That’s a significant reduction over time. I will also make a significant caveat that in FY25, we switched how we reported FTE to make sure we were consistent that all staff members were reported on a 40-hour equivalent so that as we move forward, it’s easier for the community to understand how we account for things in a way that makes more sense to the public. So that does account for some of the decrease in staff, I want to note. Just a few notes on beyond 26, because this is going to be a significant topic of conversation as we progress to the second part of the meeting. Overall, we’re going to continue to see some declines in enrollment over the next three years. I think the junior high will probably see the largest decline in enrollment, while the other two levels will remain relatively stable for three years if NESDEC trends continue to hold. We do anticipate we’ll continue to see higher student needs across all of our levels. You know, expenses, and this is something we want to be really clear about with the community early. I think we’re all seeing the impact of these reductions, but we are not seeing a change in the market in terms of negotiations around contracts, and we do have contracts up next year that we’re going to be negotiating. But the market continues to correct for, you know, kind of less-than-optimal level of educator and other school employee increases over a long period of time, and that’s been challenging. So I know that’s hard for a lot of districts right now. The market is not changing, and that’s something we’ll be working on next year. Health insurance, early indicators from Maya are to carry 15 or more percent on health insurance rates next year. We will not have a large savings from opt-outs next year. That’s a one-time savings, so we anticipate that we’re going to have to bear the full brunt of that impact. We also don’t know what utilities will look like, and if current utility increases are going to hold for another year or not, and also needing to think- going to hold for another year or not, and also needing to think long-term budgeting for capital needs. The long-term thing that we're really all thinking about from a capital perspective are the high school rooftop units, and that is almost a four million dollar project that needs to be done. So, we are thinking now about how we're going to work toward that end, but those high school rooftop units, when I say that our HVAC person in the summer actually runs a garden hose and a sprinkler up to the roof of the high school to keep the rooftop units running, that's actually not a joke. So, those will need to be done in the next couple of years, and it's expensive. So, want to be thinking about that. What we're projecting now, based on our multi-year model that we maintain, is it's probably, in order to maintain services from one year to next after this year, is going to be probably north of a five percent budget increase, between five and a quarter, five and a half, somewhere in that range. We don't know what it is, but we want to be transparent and really upfront about what that looks like. We're also dealing with a lot of uncertainty, you know, at the, from federal support, we've the funding for it, and as we learned this week, the future of it. We just don't know what that will look like. State funding, we don't know what chapter seventy-eight might do, regional transportation, circuit breaker. You know, one of the things that I quite honestly worry most about is, you know, we receive only about a million seven in aid from the federal government, but I think Maury Healy just said they're receiving about sixteen billion a year in federal aid, and if for some reason that's impacted, I don't know how the state would make up for all of the other services outside of education that wouldn't also impact us. So I think it's just something to be thinking about and tracking as another area of volatility and uncertainty that we, we don't know about yet. So, with that rosy report, you know, I will turn it over back to the chair for comment.
Thanks, Peter. All right, so I am happy to welcome any budget feedback and public participation at this time on anything related to the budget. So if anybody has any comments they wish to make regarding the budget, now's the time. If we don't have anything now, we will adjourn and have the school committee discuss the budget, and then when we return to public participation, it'll be anything that's not regarding the budget. So we'll only have public participation for things not regarding the budget. Anybody in the audience have any public comments regarding our budget for our budget hearing? Seeing none, I would gladly entertain a motion to adjourn our annual budget hearing.
So moved.
So that's going to be Vikram and Tori. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed abstentions? That is unanimous. So, we are now adjourned. I can close that tab, and I will return us to our regular school committee meeting. And now we're going to have a discussion on the budget for the school committee members. After that, then we will have student rep update, but I don't think I see any student reps here. So then we'll move into public, public participation then. So, any questions or comments for Peter on the budget that he just presented?
I actually do have one, and I realize that this is nitpicky, but I just, what, I did review like all of the line items that were provided. Most of them made perfect sense to me. I did wonder, there's one line, number, it's thirty-five other admin supplies that has an increase of about two hundred thousand dollars this year, or for FY twenty-six, and I just wondered why it was such a big jump and if that might be something that we could put off. And I'm sorry that I didn't send that in an email ahead of time.
That's okay, and two hundred thousand dollars is not nitpicky.
That could be the contracted services. I'm going to bring it up right now.
All right, while Sherry looks that up, well, let's see if there are any other questions, and then Sherry, just give me a high sign if you, once you've found that. Any other comments or questions on what was presented? Tori.
So, I appreciated seeing the number of what it's going to take to maintain services. I feel like we're coming in with this budget that, that feels low, like everybody's excited about this year because it feels like we're doing what we said we were going to do. We're, we're going to stay within three percent, and I think we've realized that we can't moving forward because the growth of expenses is so steep that three percent doesn't get us close. What we're getting from chapter seventy doesn't get us close, like, nothing does. And so I think it's really going to be important that we communicate along with what we're doing with this budget and all of the cuts, that we can't keep going at three percent, like, this is it. So, I appreciate you putting that number out there, Peter.
Jenny.
Just to follow up on that, to all of our educators and parents and, you know, the community as a whole, who, you know, I think everybody agrees that our school district is the basis of our property values and in addition to being, you know, an amazing thing for a lot of other reasons, and we just do not have the revenue or the resources that we need to maintain the excellent school district that, that we have had and that many of our children have benefited from. And, you know, this is, this is an issue with regard to putting the, the federal disaster aside with regard to state funding. So, I would urge everybody to contact our state delegation to let them know how upsetting this is, how hard this is, and that, you know, it's way past time to, to, for the legislature to get it together and reform chapter seventy funding, because it's, it's been recognized that it is out of date and not working since the Foundation Budget Review Commission that I think came out with its report in maybe twenty fifteen. And, you know, the Student Opportunity Act did not remedy those deficiencies. So, it's a very, very painful position for us to be in, for the administration to be in, but especially for our teachers and our kids and our families. So, I would, you know, we appreciated all the feedback that we got from so many people, but really that needs to be directed at Beacon Hill at, at this point and going forward. So, I would just urge everybody to, to, to do that if you have concerns. Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Jenny, it's a good opportunity. I want to thank Sherry because, you don't have, you can keep working, Sherry. You're adding numbers. But I want to thank Sherry because, you know, we heard from at least one or two families that they would like to be able to write to legislators and advocate for this. So Sherry actually has drafted a letter, a template that families can use, so we'll be posting that and being able to share it with different groups and individuals who would like to write to the legislature and really advocate for better funding for, for schools.
So I'll take this time, since it seems opportune, to just highlight that the joint committee, Ways and Means Committee, is scheduled to meet on their FY twenty-six budget hearing focused on local aid on Monday, March twenty-fourth, starting at eleven AM at UMass Amherst. There is a large contingent of school committee and school members and MAS, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents, MASC, our organization, MARS, the Regional School Association, are all going there to testify to really push our, the, the joint committee and to push our legislators to understand the challenges that we're having. So, I will send a note out to everybody with some of the information, which will include some of the advocacy letter both that Sherry's worked on and that MARS has sent out as well. It's an open invitation. Anyone can go. I believe it's first come, first seated there, and I will be also sending this out to our both towns' select boards, finance committees, town managers, town administrators, so that we have a, a big showing there to, to really begin to do some of that advocating. Yeah, and then we'll go to Sherry. She's got the answer.
Just, just a quick update on the legislative advocacy. So, one of our state rep, Simon Cattaldo, he has, actually has office hour tomorrow at noon at Acton Memorial Library, so please drop by if you can.
Thank you. Sherry.
The majority of it is the contracted service for the RFP that's already on the agenda for tonight. We had to increase unemployment, a lot of it because it says admin, there are central office expenses. So we have our contracted services for the software that has gone up, like our Munis system, our financial system. We had some separation costs of people that we know that are going to be leaving within the next school year that if we have to buy out their sick time per contract. The unemployment, the dues and fees that have also gone up, and that probably is about a hundred and eighty right there. There's different line items. If you want a complete breakdown, I can send it to you separately.
Yeah, but it's not like, oh, we, we bought too many paper, we're planning to buy more paper clips that we could just like cut. Cool. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments, questions on the budget? I'd like to highlight one thing. Peter, could you go back to that slide with the totals, the numbers on them? You know, this was a, this was a, an illustration that I asked Peter to present to us because I think we all left Budget Saturday thinking positively about our situation, that we had at least squirreled away an extra hundred and fifty thousand with a, you know, the hopes that the, the state would, would backfill that for us, then we might be able to bring something back. Yeah, that's the one. Thank you. And so I think it's really important just to, to reiterate to everybody that we started on that Saturday with a preliminary budget of a hundred and sixteen million, and we ended the day by saying, hey, the governor's budget, which feels pretty good, is going to give us an extra almost five hundred thousand, and then we put an extra hundred and fifty K in there. And every penny of that and then some to the total of thirty thousand nine hundred dollars has gotten consumed with additional expenses between Budget Saturday and now. So that headroom that we thought we had in the budget headroom is, is not a fair representation of what, really what we thought we had, but that additional funding that we had accounted for at the end of Budget Saturday, it's gone. It's already gone and then some. So I think it's just really important that we recognize that, and I, and I want to thank the administration for finding thirty thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars elsewhere in the budget so that we didn't have to cut another half of FTE and that we could keep at least the level of services that we have today. So that's, that's the first thing, and then I want to echo the comments that Tori made. You know, Peter showed that to maintain the, the services that we have now, it's a five and a quarter to five and a half percent operating budget increase. An operating budget does not translate to what the assessment will increase to both towns, and I know that over the past few weeks, we've been very clear with both towns to say that will be in the realm of six to six and a half percent for the town of Acton and somewhere in the realm of ten to twelve percent assessment increase for the town of Boxborough. There is nothing left to cut. I think we've been through that a couple times now. So, I would say that as we continue to do our advocacy work, as we continue to talk to both our legislators, but also the folks in our towns, we have to get them prepared for this. This is not a surprise. This has been coming, and I think we just need to be very clear that the school budget cannot be cut anymore. We need five and a quarter to five and a half percent increase in our operating budget next year to maintain the level, the relatively meager level of services that we have now, and that there is nothing left to cut. So I would encourage every school committee member to begin to socialize that through your networks, through the legislative outreach that you do, through any of that, that, you know, it's been four years of austerity, there's nothing left to cut, and we've tried. We know that there's a problem at the, at the state level, but the communities need to be prepared to, to see that number come, and, and we'll have to deal with that, obviously, as we, after we get through this budget, we'll have to start doing some of that outreach. That's what our, our reorganization task is around as well, but hasn't even started yet, so there's no guarantee that that's going to save us five and a half percent next year. All right. Any last questions, comments on the budget? All right, so as a reminder, we'll be taking a vote next week. As a double reminder, we're meeting next week. For those of us who are used to that every other week schedule, we're back here next week. And do please fill out the school committee attendance calendar so that I know that if you're not available, I can figure out my vote calculation spreadsheet then. It's, it's very technical, let me tell you. All right. If there's no other comments on the budget, we'll move on to, I don't see any student reps in the room, public participation. So again, any members of the public who wish to speak are invited to do so for up to three minutes. Public participation will only take place during this time of the meeting, and since we already had an opportunity to speak on the budget, we won't be hearing any comments on the budget. Is there anybody in the room who would like to make a public comment? Excellent. We'll move on to the superintendent's update. Back to you, Peter.
All right, thanks, Adam. In other exciting topics, MCAS season is upon us. The state obviously voted to end the requirement of MCAS as a graduation requirement for the competency determination. However, there is no other change to how schools are required to administer MCAS. So we will be sending out some information for families just to kind of make sure that our families understand that the change impacting the competency determination does not impact any other aspect of MCAS. You know, we know that sometimes families have questions about is MCAS required for students to participate? There actually isn't a state process to opt-out, and school districts are actually held accountable for participation rates. And so, we have had some situations where even some, you know, of our highest performing schools have ended up in a scenario where they are classified as a school requiring assistance because they have low participation rates. So schools continue to have to advocate. We have argued with DESI about that in the past. It is, I will say, you know, which is somewhat, you know, humorous at this time, it's actually a federal requirement that DESI also holds schools accountable for that participation rate. So there's just not a lot of flexibility for schools to be able to say, yes, we have an opt-out. So, we'll send out some information about that so families know what that is and, you know, keep moving in that direction regarding spring MCAS administration. Leadership updates. We have been engaged in the search for a new Director of Special Education. You know, I am pleased to let you know that we have narrowed that. We had two finalists who each spent a couple days in the district over the last two days. Good participation and good feedback. I had an opportunity to review that feedback. I'm not yet announcing the finalist publicly because I want that individual to be able to speak with their school administration. However, I do have a candidate that I will be recommending forward to you at your meeting next week, so that will go in the packet tomorrow. Candidate knows that, and at that point, that will be public, that that's our candidate, we're moving forward. And, you know, I think we were really fortunate that we had two really highly qualified individuals this year who applied for the Director of Special Education position, who each brought some really, really skilled and unique experience to this. I have to tell you, references for both candidates were impeccable, very, very strong. I want to thank Amanda Bailey for having reached out to CPACs in both communities, who actually wrote really extensive recommendations for both candidates, who are both equally positive about families' perspectives on our candidates. So, it really was a difficult choice, and ultimately, we were able to narrow down based on some of what we perceived as our current needs. So, we will be putting that in the packet tomorrow, and you will see the Director of Special Education finalist for your appointment at the next school committee meeting. So, we're looking forward to that. This week was World Cultures Week at the high school. That is one of the coolest weeks that our high school does. It's really a tradition in the school. It's an opportunity for students and staff to just showcase the remarkable diversity that we have around our school, share cultures with each other, and just a real celebration of the culture of our community and schools. So congratulations to the high school. We also had elementary literacy weeks going on this week. I will tell you personally, I had a chance to be a guest reader in Ms. Kreisel's class at Blanchard. It was actually last week, and it's just such an awesome experience to be able to go in, spend some time with our second graders, and just really, you know, be able to talk about literature and read stories. So, thank you so much to Ms. Kreisel for inviting me in. Vision of a graduate. We are continuing now again to make some more progress on vision of a graduate. We had to delay our community forum because we just weren't getting people signing up to participate, and this is a really important process for us. We will be using the vision of a graduate we've developed as a foundational element for the reorganization work that we will be undertaking next year. I want to say that again. The vision of a graduate we're developing is our vision of what we want our students experiencing over the course of their careers here. We're spending time on that this year. We've already sought significant community feedback in the form of surveys that people were able to engage in multiple times. We've had twenty-five hundred participants who have participated. All of our high school students had an opportunity to participate as well and give us their feedback. Our steering committee for that is going to be calling all of that survey data together and pulling that together in a way that we can host some efficient community forums. So on April fifteenth, we're actually going to have two different community forums, one at fourth thirty? Four thirty to six? And the other from six thirty to eight. We're actually going to have a little reception in between with just some light refreshments so people can mingle, make it a little bit of a social event. We really want our community's participation in this, educators' participation, families, community members at large. We're also bringing in some members of the business community who are, you know, tied into statewide networks around the most relevant current skills. into statewide networks around the most relevant current skills employers are working for, looking for, to provide a little educational opportunity for all of us too, so that we can look at our vision through that lens in addition to all of our community lenses. And we're excited to be kind of back on track with that and want to bring that to fruition by the end of this school year so that that can be that foundational document that helps us organize what we're doing in our schools. Also, I think we talked about this earlier because we recognized one of our high school students, Arian, who is working with the Acton 250 Committee. He has developed a scavenger hunt. And so we did a kickoff earlier of this year when he actually was able to go into a lot of our fifth grade classes. But we will be sending out because that scavenger hunt is now kicking off starting on Sunday, March 16th. So we'll be sending that out to some additional information for families. So some really good stuff going on across the district and, you know, certainly thank you to everyone for all the great opportunities we are providing for our students.
Thank you, Peter. Anybody have questions on the update? All right. We are off now to guests and presentations. Dr. Abrams is going to speak about her entry plan findings. Hi, Gabby. Welcome.
So good to see you. Thanks for having me back.
Back from, you know, at the center table versus the side table?
Back from the, from the, from the side.
It's very exciting when we allow her to come to the front and not have to talk to the back of people's heads.
It's good to see you. Let me just make sure the technology works. Excellent. So thank you so much. I would share that this is probably more of an update than maybe what might sound like findings. I'm really excited to be able to give you just a look back at the last seven months that I've really enjoyed in terms of leading and learning in this community and just share some very high-level updates with you. I did, just as a little bit of a caveat, I recorded for the faculty and staff a video message for them to walk them through the entry plan prior to this evening. And I did start at 40 minutes and I did end up at 17. Is that what I said, after three takes? So I know. I'm hoping that I can be concise. No pressure, but I'm really glad to be here. So as you know, we always anchor ourselves in our mission, vision, and values, and these have become an appendage for me as well. I'm so happy to be able to add them to my repertoire of values as well. And the district strategy, which anchors all of us in all that we do. And you'll note that this district strategy is a 21 to 26 district strategy. And as Superintendent Light mentioned, we are really excited to launch into the next phase of strategic planning in our community. Just a reminder about the purpose of the entry plan, which I shared with you back in September, the why behind. This has been the primary function of my work over the last six to seven months, though there's been much work to continue while I've also been studying, listening, and asking so many questions. Lots of caveats here. So I want to highlight what, a little bit about what this is and what this isn't. What this is, is a high-level sharing of learnings rather than findings. I feel like the word findings is very fixed and it doesn't leave a lot of room for the fact that this process is not fixed. And some of the learnings that I've gained insight about may shift because as I learn more, I say to Peter oftentimes, I'm like, I feel like there's more that I don't know still. And that's a true statement, actually, because six months is not six years and six years is not 16 years. And there's so much that I'm learning every day. I've highlighted, I've provided highlights that are captured in broad strokes, but this is a non-exhaustive share. I would be here all night if I shared all the things that I learned. I also want to highlight the fact that I recognize the complexity of schools as organizations and they deserve incredible respect. So these learnings may feel oversimplified at times or overgeneralized, and that's not my intent. And I just want to share that I completely understand the complexity of organizations and have deep respect for the work that happens inside our schools. There will continue to be new learnings. As I've said, they cross over lots of different categories. So I'm going to be talking about curriculum, professional learning, and leadership. And there's intersectionality that exists between and among those buckets of teaching and learning categories. I'm not presenting to you an action plan or even a timeline for these actions, but you will be seeing a lot of the questions that I ask appearing in future strategic plans. And you'll say, oh, that's what I heard about on March 13th. And then lastly, what I wanted to make sure to emphasize to all the faculty and staff and to all of you and to our community who allowed me into their worlds, just deep gratitude and appreciation for the candor, the opportunities, and the relationships that I've been graciously granted over this time. So thank you so much. So the agenda for tonight is broken down here. I'm going to first talk about methodology. So you'll see I used lots of different methods to engage in my entry process, observations, conversations. We facilitated a thought exchange with our faculty, staff, and our families, data and document analysis. I also didn't visit every single classroom and I didn't speak with every single faculty and staff member and every single community member, but what I did was gather a great deal, a large stock of data. And I tried to find where the themes had crossovers and what seems to rise to the top for themes to share with you this evening. The thought exchange that we facilitated way back in the fall sought to answer the question, what should we stop, start, and continue to do as it relates to curriculum and instructional practices? I think similar to what we've experienced with the vision of a graduate engagement and focusability, we've not yet found a sweet spot in terms of engagement in these kinds of experiences. So the participation rate was quite low. 259 participants in a faculty, staff, and community survey was quite low. And what I want to highlight is that the greatest finding that came out of this was echoed in a great deal of other data sources. So we are in a time in education where there's a real, thought exchange positions these as side A and side B, which feels like it's one against the other, but it really is just two sides of the same coin. Where in this field right now, we are, there's a real sense of desire not to lose teacher autonomy from so many of our educators and so many of our colleagues throughout the field. At the same time, there's a real aspiration as well for standardization and consistency. And what is really comforting that we can see here is that the common ground is that they're all student-centered. There's, everyone has the same why, but there's a real difference on the how that we accomplish those things. And I think this is something that we're going to need to navigate with care and grace as we continue to grow as a system and continue to work with students with lots of diverse learning needs. And I'll speak more about that in a moment. So the first thing I want to do is celebrate. I have six bullets. I probably could have had 60. But in terms of the assets that I saw most prevalent in the conversations that I had with folks in the community, there is such a deep sense of pride. There is such a commitment to social, emotional learning integrated as part of the whole student learning experience. Diversity is seen as such a strength in this community. Depth of educator content knowledge and passion for teaching is ever-present. The centering of work on students and then aspirational leadership. We keep asking, everyone on this leadership team is like, what is next? What can we do for kids that's even better? And those are real points of pride that I think you should all feel very, very happy about and feel like that's going to fuel us forward. It's really important to center our students. And I thought it would be interesting to look back at the same slide that Peter shared with you all about our enrollment, but I wanted to share it with a little bit of a different spin. So one of the challenges that we've seen financially is that we've had declining enrollment. We've, since in the last 10 years since regionalization, we've declined about 725 students. And as you can see, the projections pacing out over the next eight years, we're going to continue to decline slightly in enrollment. What makes it really interesting is that we have also seen a continued enriching student diversity, a rise in student diversity and needs. So while we're declining, the students who are in front of us are showing us that they have a different level of needs than what we've seen previously. And just, you know, one example is the high-needs category, which we've talked about before. That's any kiddo for whom low socioeconomic status, former EL or English learner, or a student identified as having exceptional needs, they fit into a category of high-needs. That category has increased by 10% in the last 10 years. So while our overall enrollment is declining, our student needs and our enriching diversity is rising. And I do think that there's an opportunity there to really have very meaningful conversations. And a lot of my questions about next steps are kind of focused on those two areas. I wanted to provide one snapshot about student achievement that kind of echoes a little bit of what I just talked about. And this doesn't have nuanced numbers intentionally, but if I tried to find the highest level data points that I possibly could across our system to talk about us as a whole system versus specific grade levels. So I looked at student proficiency in grades three through eight and 10 as an aggregate, so all of our MCAS assessments together, and in English, mathematics, and science, technology, and engineering. And then I did something that I haven't done before, which is I looked at just non-high need students. Usually I look at all students, to be honest with you, which includes high-needs students and non-high-needs students. But I looked at just non-high-needs students. And I said, wow, we have a history of incredible success. And I knew this with meeting, we have high success in this area with all content areas, with kiddos with non-high-needs. 89th percentile, 80th percentile, 85th percentile, 89th percentile, just an incredible level of success. And then on the other side, on the right-hand side, I wanted to look at just the high-needs students. And those numbers, the same assessment, the same grade levels, were about 34 to 40%. And the visual is very powerful for me to see, the left and the right. And so we've maintained a relatively stable achievement gap between those two non-high-needs students and high-needs students, but there for me lies the work. Because our efforts are really intended to close that gap, not to lower the achievement of those who are achieving so beautifully high and so successfully, but to really close the achievement gap between high-needs and non-high-needs students. And again, that just kind of echoes a little bit more on what I talked about in the first, the two slides prior around declining enrollment and our enriching diversity that continues to grow. I thought it also important just to show, what does DESI expect us to do? So these are the standards and indicators that I am held accountable for, we as a district are held accountable for. When we go through district reviews, these are the categories that the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education wants to know about. They want to see artifacts and evidence that we're moving in, these, we're progressing in this, in this work. These are updated since, just as of August 2024. I was interested in kind of asterisk-ing the areas that teaching and learning touches. And guess what? It's all of them. So we spread across all of, all of these areas. And so just to kind of anchor us in, what is it that we're expected to do? How are we evaluated as a district? These are the areas, the standards and indicators. So in the, in the, most of the rest of the learnings that I'm going to be sharing with you are anchored in four different categories. Curriculum and program alignment, equity and access, which is a very big bucket. Professional learning and educator support. Student-centered, evidence-informed culture or assessment, and organizational or leadership and leadership capacity. So those are the areas that I'm going to share with you, both strengths. What were the strengths that surfaced in the data review, the conversations, the observations that I engaged in? When I offer strengths, I also think about them as a moment in time and also on a continuous improvement trajectory. So even the strengths are noted as, we're in a, like, this is a real strength for our community and what's next for these areas to continue to help them grow because they're going to be pivotal for the other areas. And then instead of framing opportunities or challenges or something that might feel more negative, I really decided to frame next steps as questions. Things that I've been thinking about connected with the areas that I think are going to be next for us. I think it's important to frame them as next steps because that also acknowledges the fact that change is developmentally progressive and that it's on a continuum. And you have to start from some level of strength or some level of development in order to get to that next level of development. And so I thought next steps felt to be the most appropriate. So these four categories I'll be talking about through the lens of both strengths and next steps. So curriculum and program alignment, equity and access. And keep in mind, this is non-exhaustive and I tried to keep the numbers reasonable so that they all stood out. So I want to highlight for you the areas that stood out as really great strengths and opportunities for us to anchor ourselves in continued good work. We've talked a lot about the adoption of EL and illustrative math in our K through eight and K through six environments. You all supported with financial backing the adoption of a K to 12 social, emotional learning explicit instruction program. We're dabbling this year in some high-quality instructional materials in fifth and sixth grade social studies called Investigating History. You haven't heard too much about that, but that's something that we're exploring and the teachers are actually like really loving, which is really rewarding. We've talked a lot about multi-tiered systems of support, flex blocks, K to six, advisory, seven through 12. The reduction in levels at the high school is really a strength and a courageous move and it's developmentally on a trajectory. And of course, the vision of a graduate process. In terms of next steps, I'm not going to read through all of these, but what I would say is they, for me, they encapsulate processes that we need to consider in order to enhance our ability to provide the greatest level of access and equity for our students. So curriculum mapping, unit internalization protocols, curriculum review cycles are all processes that are evidence and research-based. And so wondering how we can start to explore some of those processes to integrate. Really paying close attention to the way in which professional learning time is allocated. We have an exceptional amount of professional learning and collaboration time in this community. It's a real value to honor our professionals with professional learning time. There is never going to be enough, but I've really never been part of a community that has as much professional collaboration and professional learning time. And what I want to highlight is really focusing that professional learning time on tier-one instruction and inclusive practices. These are really key elements for me in the findings of the work that I have engaged in as part of this process, really, really working. And the teachers have said that to me, not in those words, but they've said that those are the needs that they have, working to intensify their own understanding of how to work with diverse multilingual learners, students who are newcomers to our, to our community, to our country, really leveraging that, students with more intense diverse learning needs. That is an incredible focus that needs to be moving forward. The second and the last bullets are worthy of mentioning. Because of financial challenges in the last few years, we've had to make some really tough decisions about our library media science program as well as our digital literacy and computer science program. We've reduced library media specialists at the elementary school. We went from four to three just this year. So really trying to figure out how that fits within the trajectory of a student learning experience because it's just, it's not the same experience without someone who has that depth of knowledge, training, and background. And additionally, we had to sacrifice some positions in terms of digital literacy and computer science. And that's something that we really need to continue to think about, especially in this technologically advancing world. And then lastly, and I know Peter mentioned it earlier about if we, if we could, we would be increasing staffing in our multilingual learner program. And so we have a lot to work on regarding those staffing needs and how we can creatively leverage schedules to address student learning needs without additional staff. The next category is professional learning and educator support. And here are some strengths that I highlighted in my video recording today. I really celebrated the leadership team that I was able to join. I talked a little bit about when I went to principal school. And I went to principal school because I wanted to have a broader impact instructionally. Teaching and learning was always my jam. It was really exciting to be able to enter into that space as a graduate student into an educational leadership program. And I'm so thrilled to talk educational leadership with all of our colleagues across our schools. They are all instructional leaders. It's really an incredible asset to this community. Thinking about the number of structures we have, I already mentioned, our professional learning options. You have remained committed to teacher leadership positions, which is an incredible strength in this community. Our instructional coaches, our junior high department coordinators, and our nine through 12 department leaders are a gift to teachers. Job-embedded professional development is the best way to learn. And so we have those positions to do that. And the adoption of an online, on-demand professional learning platform specifically targeted to support us to meet multilingual needs is a great asset. Next steps. I have a lot of questions and hopes for increasing and optimizing those teacher leader roles for tier-one instructional support, really pushing that even further to better support teachers. Looking at how we can better leverage our school schedules and the allocation of our collaboration time specifically with our special education and multilingual educators. They are incredible assets and experts in the field. And I have lots of wonderings about how we can better pair our classroom teachers with intention with our special educators and multilingual educators. Again, Again, to hearken back to that, inclusive practices so that we're keeping our kiddos in the classroom with their classroom teachers as much as possible. And lastly, the, another learning was that I'm hearing a lot from educators about wanting voice and choice in their professional learning. How can we give some autonomy as opposed to that standardization when educators are saying, I know where I am on this trajectory, and this is what's next for me? And so that's an area that I really want to challenge our thinking on. Student-centered, evidence-informed data culture. Lots of great work that's happening, and I'd say K to six is leading the way in this work through the adoption of Forefront, which is a data visualization tool. I want to be excited to like bring that forward to our seven through 12. We have solid, universal screening tools, academic and social-emotional learning tools, K to eight, and, and K to 12 for social-emotional learning. We've started to talk about equitable grading practices through some research, seven through 12, and the launch of Power School grading portal access also goes really hand-in-hand with that equitable grading conversation at the secondary level. And so that's really exciting to, to launch us. And can we take that even further? So how can we continue those conversations, seven through 12? And also, we've been having pretty deep conversations about a consistent reporting tool, K to six. So we currently have six different ways in which we communicate with families about their academic, the academic progress of their students, as well as social-emotional development of their competencies. So we're moving towards having conversations about a reporting tool, which I know is a school committee policy, so we'll be in touch with you about that. And I think it's always important for us to ask questions about what additional assessments and curriculum resources can be leveraged to gain a clearer sense of student need. There, the elementary educators have adopted core resources that are allowing them time and space back, not having to curate and create, but to focus on what are the prerequisite skills that students need to access these curriculum resources. And so I've been asking those questions throughout the district. Would looking at some other resources be helpful? That's, those are hard questions to answer because it's very different than what we have ever done before, and maybe the time might be now to, to really consider that. And then, again, leveraging frontline success, our first implementation year, to see if we can expand that K to 12. And our last category was organizational leadership capacity. You'll see that prioritization of teacher leaders appear here again because it, it fits. Also, the positions that are, that are central, centrally located in terms of social-emotional learning, multilingual coordinator, elementary coordinator, visual and performing arts, diversity, equity, and inclusion, and special education. This team of central office leaders has really been an incredible group of thought partners to, to join. And while there can be, there can be a silo effect sometime with those roles, the culture that's been created in this district around how those positions are, are intended to, to intersect and support one another is, is really clear. And in addition to that, that the team at central office and the way in which the, the school principals interact is, is very, there's a high level of trust and collaboration that exists that is also an area of pride. So next steps in these, in these areas is to continue to clarify the roles and responsibilities of the teacher leaders so that we can enhance the support of educators. I keep going back to tier one. It's probably a familiar drumbeat to you right now because I know that you know that the biggest piece of that MTSS triangle is tier one. It's what happens in the classroom. And so we have to keep thinking about how do we keep putting support into tier one? Because you do that really, really well, and with a great deal of strength, you will not need the same level of tier-two and tier-three support. Continue to deepen the leadership capacity of those positions so that we're bringing leadership understanding around change management. I think some of the challenges that I often hear from teacher leaders is, is familiar because it's, they're the challenges that, that I deal with around, you know, change. It's, it's actually not content-specific, it's worldly-specific. And then addressing the gaps in oversight, and as I mentioned, the library media and digital literacy. I have not mentioned yet comprehensive wellness, and I think it's important to mention that a few years ago, we reduced a health and wellness, health and PE director position. And that has, that has been hard, especially during a time when we have new comprehensive health and physical education frameworks. I don't necessarily think that a health and physical education director position is the question I'm asking because I, I think more about a comprehensive wellness model, and I really would like to explore that in the district. There are models recommended by DESI, CDC, ASCD, called the Whole School, Whole Community, Whole Child framework, which actually has ten tenets to it. And that leadership role actually oversees a lot of SEL, nursing, schools, physical education, and, and health and PE, all of those things. And so I really, you know, think that we need to think about a comprehensive wellness model moving forward, recognizing that fiscal impact is, is, is real. I'm almost done. So here's the big, the big thinking. We have so much strength that has brought us to this point, and I think we need to use it to fuel ourselves into the future, but I think we need to potentially think in different ways. Our kids are telling us that, the society is telling us that, our fiscal climate is telling us that. We still have the same, I think we have the same goals that we've always had for kids. We want to, we want our educational systems to prepare kids for critical thinking skills, to innovate, to address global challenges, to promote equality, to be adaptable, and to serve as ethical leaders. We want that. We've, you know, probably always wanted that. And we have all of these challenges that exist, financial instability and declining enrollment, increasingly complex student needs, rapidly changing technological advancements. I think we're going to have to challenge the thoughts that are inside of us that, that sometimes come out that say, well, we've not done it that way before, or I haven't thought about the work in that way before. And maybe we need to think about doing it a different way because we're serving a different, a different population. So I will end with one of my favorite podcasters and authors, Adam Grant. This is, this is kind of how I think about this work. Intelligence is usually seen as the ability to think and learn, but in a rapidly changing world, the ability to rethink and unlearn matters even more. And so that's the challenge that I think is before us. How can we rethink and unlearn some of the things that we might know and be open to opening space up for doing things a little bit differently because of the world in which we live, the conditions that are on the ground, and the society that our students are entering into? That, as we've always said, there are jobs that they're going to enter into that haven't even been created yet, right? And with a lot of gratitude, I offer opportunity for any questions.
Thank you so much, Gabby. I, I lost track of time.
Thanks. It wasn't forty minutes, right?
It was not forty minutes. I guarantee that. Any questions or comments from the committee?
Hi, Gabby.
Hi.
I have two questions. Number one is slide sixteen, where you did a comparison between, not comparison, you showed the data for non-high-need students' performance and high-needs. I think that's brilliant. My question is that, do you know what's the high-need student percentage of all students?
The high-needs percentage of all students at, in 2024, 25 is, was on the next slide, thirty-three percent.
Okay. My second question is that...
Thanks for that.
I must have missed it. My second question is that, I know life happens, especially this winter slash spring, everybody got sick. My question is that, in, like, across the schools, there are going to be teachers' absences. And I'm just wondering, like, so when students miss an instruction day, how, do we have any plans to make up for that? Because again, like, you know, if my son misses a math day, he'll come home, we'll work with him, but there are many students who don't have that option? So the missing instruction time, how are they going to be able to make up?
Yeah, I think it's a really good question. I don't, I think that the recent conversations over chronic absenteeism have really inspired a lot of different thinking in that area. There hasn't been specific action. I mean, educators have all been incredibly creative about putting together packets, making sure that they, some record their, record something for students to, to look at. I just, I had a conversation with a high school teacher recently about that, but, you know, gathering materials, but you can, the most powerful experience that a student has is within the classroom, within the forty-five, fifty-two, sixty-seven minutes. And so you can never replace that. But I do think that's one of the areas that we're going to need to really be thoughtful about as we move forward. We've always probably had to be thoughtful about it, we've just never created a, another system about it. I think there's, there's a program that I was a part of during COVID called the Modern Classroom Project, and actually Peter recently shared a, a research project that they're doing right now. The, the modality of the Modern Classroom Project that one of our, I think retired math teacher in Acton, Bucksboro was deeply ingrained in was like a blended learning model where educators kind of flipped the classroom. Have you heard that term before, a flipped classroom? So sometimes students will do some work ahead of time, and they'll come into the classroom, and it won't be the direct instruction that we're typically familiar with. This is just one example. There would be an opportunity for students to do some prep work and come in with some background knowledge. And then the classroom is, is intended to be designed for activity-based, deepening learning, challenging assumptions, extending opportunities. So that's, that's one way of, one way of doing it. The Modern Classroom Project does it through videos, where educators record videos, they do explicit teaching through videos, and students kind of self-pace through activities, and the teacher becomes the facilitator of small-group instruction throughout the class period. So there are ideas out there in the field for how to address that. We've not adopted anything widespread, but I do think it's a really important question for us to explore. Thank you.
Becca, and then Lakshmi.
Hi.
Hi.
I really appreciate seeing, you know, this all laid out and sort of explained, both, you know, current, you know, strengths and, you know, what points you'd like to see moving forward. I think that that was, you know, a great way to structure it. I do want to nitpick a little bit on language, where I think that it's really hard for a layman who's not sort of well-versed in school lingo, or even, you know, like sort of corporate lingo, what any of that meant. So, you know, while I think this sort of venue is speaking to people like us that do know a lot, I think there's probably a lot of people listening who maybe don't know what a lot of that sort of meant. And then I also sort of wanted to point out, because I do think the, the idea of like a, a whole school, community wellness sort of framework is a really interesting and great idea. I guess my initial gut reaction is that could also be really bad if it sort of turns into taking away choice. I think it's great if we focus on education and providing supports. Just looking at it, sort of what's out there right now, it just leaps out to me that there isn't sort of language right off the bat about accessibility being important, cultural sensitivity, that sort of thing. Just right off the bat, I don't see Googling it, a lot of that kind of language baked in, and I think that there's two ways this could go. I don't want to sort of bring everybody down, but we do remember the Eugenics movement. So I think that there's great ways that this sort of thing could be used, and also negative ways.
Thank you. And if there's specific feedback of things, this is really intended for you and for our faculty and staff, and I appreciate it. I'm always sensitive to edu-speak and sometimes don't even catch myself. So if there's anything specific that I can alter, I'm happy to do that as well.
Thanks, Gabby. Sure, Lakshmi. So I'm looking at, again, go back to the slide sixteen, where you showed the gap, the, the achievement gap, meeting expect, exceed, meeting or exceeding between the two groups. Between thirty-plus change, right? So just wondering, curious, is, is there a case study or anything that you have come across where that gap is much narrower? And if so, what, what is it that they, they do, did differently, or is it just the makeup of those groups that is different? What is inherently so different that we are doing, we can improve on?
Yeah, I think it's such a thoughtful question. So I didn't break these down into subgroups because we had talked about that in the fall. We had looked at all the different subgroups in the fall and all the different, and you, and you recall potentially that the subgroups that the greatest gap are students with special education needs, multilingual learners, and Hispanic-Latino identifying students. So those were the groups of students who had the, the greatest needs. I will say that this is, this is not an uncommon challenge. This is the challenge in our field, and education is meeting the diverse learning needs and diverse cultural needs of students, and specifically those three groups of students. There are specific strategies that are, you know, recommended in the field for trying to mitigate those practices, and some of them are being employed right now in pockets in, throughout the district. So high-quality instructional materials or the adoption of illustrative math and EL is one example. So having access, equal access to standard-aligned, vetted, evaluated, criteria-based curriculum and instructional materials, again, so that teachers can be lifted from the burden of the extra curating and creating, is a research and evidence-based practice that works for those students. A lot of the research speaks to the fact that sometimes, one of the reasons why the gap exists is because students aren't often exposed to grade-level material and high levels of expectation. And that's why one of the strengths that I noted was the reduction in leveling at the high school. That is an incredible strategy to aim to increase opportunity and access for all students to be able to really achieve at high levels. So there's lots of research about different strategies, and some of them are in pockets throughout the district, and I think all districts are really challenged by, by this area. I hope that helps.
So I could listen to you for forty minutes easily. I would totally listen to this. If this was the high-level version, it's amazing to think of the depth of knowledge and experience that you've been able to tap into and the thinking you've been able to do. So I really appreciate this.
Sure, thank you.
A couple of things you said that give me great comfort as we're looking at, you know, we'll get to talking competency determination later, but as we look to moving towards coursework being that key standard. And so your thoughts about tier-one instruction and strengthening that. I know that has been, you know, a challenge for some kiddos in the past to be able to access that, is that we're just not, we don't know what to do with them yet. So that felt really good to hear. And another thing that I really appreciated was noticing the challenges that scheduling provides, and I think we've heard that echoed tonight, right? You know, anytime you've got something that takes kids out of a classroom, and whether that is, you know, chronic absenteeism, or whether that is, we've got too many things stacked on top of each other, and they just can't all occur simultaneously, recognizing that and being really deliberate in it. So I appreciate that those are some of the things that bubbled up, and it gives me great confidence that you see those as things in the way ahead, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Vikram.
I just want to say, I think it was absolutely amazing and impressive presentation at a high level. It's such a large amount of data to convey in a simple manner, but you structured it in such a way that really, everything is really there very succinctly. And I think it's highly comprehensive. And to echo what Tori's saying, I mean, to see what the actual, the depth of all this is, it's just, it's highly impressive. And I think, I think you hit all the high notes. Thank you.
Thanks, Vikram.
So I'll, I'll come in and then, and I'll go to Leela. A couple of things that I think you've actually heard a couple times already. First around inclusive practices and building the practice up at, at tier-one instruction. I think that's a really great observation, and I think you'll even see some recommendations coming from the CPAC shortly around inclusion. And so I think it'd be really great to be able to take some of that feedback from CPAC and include that as well. So inclusivity can mean many, many things, obviously, but putting that at tier-one, putting that at the core of our instruction, I think is going to be amazing. Of course, you fast-forwarded away from sixteen, you don't have to, no, you don't have to go back, because a couple of people have already touched on it. And, and I, I just want to reiterate something that you said that was really impactful, and I sort of want to challenge you on how you talk about this. So you, you, you talk about closing the gap, but then you caveat that by saying, closing the gap doesn't mean lowering the standards for those who are, you know, in the, in the high-performing group. And so I think it would be really great to think about, how do we, how do we change that terminology to say raising the bar or doing something? Because we're, we're not, we're not closing the gap by bringing those at the bottom up and those at the top down, we're closing the gap by bringing those who are performing less and, and, and increasing their performance. So I think there's a change in language that would be really good there to really illustrate the fact that we're not lowering the standards for everybody, we are creating a pathway for everyone to meet the same level of high standards. And then, you know, Becca mentioned a little bit about the wellness thing. What I really liked about that that sort of excited me was, was the idea of a leadership position around comprehensive wellness and taking a lot of those disparate components inside our district and giving a, a leadership and a, and a sort of a, a central voice to that. So I think that that's something I'd love to hear some more about. And then lastly, Gabby, I just want to, you know, over and over again, every time I've interacted with you, I'm just amazed by the passion and energy, and energy, and did I mention energy that you bring to this? And so I'm so glad that we have you here. I'm so glad that you'll be a And so I'm so glad that we have you here. I'm so glad that you'll be a thought partner with us as we look to restructuring, as we look to a strategic plan, as we look to the vision of a graduate, all of that work. I think you bring such a depth of knowledge. But did I mention energy and passion to this work? So I'm super happy that we've got you with us.
Thank you, thank you.
Leela, did you have a comment?
Thank you for your presentation. I also really appreciated the opportunity to talk to you as part of that process, and appreciate how you show up, both really focused on professional work, but also showing up as yourself, with all the experiences you've had and the professional learning that you've done. I have a few comments and then maybe one question. I think for at least five years that I've been paying attention to school committee, I keep hearing about this persisting achievement gap. And I'm hearing Kira, and I'm hearing Evelyn in particular, ask some really pointed questions about why that is persisting and what we are doing. I also recognize that MCAS is a measure, and most students take it, and it can be a starting point for this conversation. And I'm wondering how we also think about evaluating student achievement more broadly, both for an individual student, but then also to think about evaluating our students as a whole, or in subgroups, a little bit more broadly than just MCAS scores. And I say this, not as a critique, but more honestly as a plea to, like, I would love to see some of this stuff shifting. And I recognize that it is not only our district. I also heard you talk about conversations around reporting. And at a brief glance, it looks like Forefront does have the opportunity to share back with families. I understand complications around wanting data to be interpreted accurately, and as we build out this practice of using data to make decisions, I wonder how that can be shared back, and families and students maybe, depending on grade level, can be part of making some of those decisions. And then to my question, a little bit more broadly than your presentation, I see a lot of this is great, and I think all of us are well aware of how many wild things are happening in the world. And I can, it is certainly affecting me as a person, and I'm curious how, and maybe this is a conversation for later, and maybe this is an email I should have sent, but how we balance wanting our students to keep learning and stay on track, while also giving space for just that people are trying to grapple with things that are happening, and things are happening to their families, and there's some fear, and how we balance all of that, and wanting our students to succeed and learn. So I don't know if that's an answerable question at this moment, but it is something on my mind as I hear you.
Yeah, thanks for sharing that with such tenderness. And thank you for your comments. Yeah, I think that, you know, I was a kiddo for whom school was my oasis. It was the place where there was safety to fall, there was safety to make mistakes, there was safety to be who I was, when other places in the world didn't feel so safe. And it was like it was a space to shut out kind of other things. And I think, you know, this is a public meeting, in my own naive way, I feel like I've wanted to create space for kids to have an oasis in schools, where they could just be whatever they wanted to be, and we could pretend that nothing else is happening. And I think we're in complex times, and that's becoming even trickier to do. And I think it's incredibly important for us to acknowledge the world events and the complexities that are happening as part of the learning journey. And that's another, I mean, I didn't even highlight this, but I can't tell you the number of conversations I had with educators who are like, really, who have such a deep belief in cultivating global citizens, who are going to impact a brighter world in the future. And so you can't do that without acknowledging the darkness that does exist in spaces. So I don't have an answer for you, but that was my postulation. Like, I think there is a balance. But I do think that there's a role in our education, in our learning, that does need to welcome in that flexibility of navigation.
Thank you. Any last questions or comments for Gabby?
This whole thing about emphasizing that we want to bring those up and not the others down, it seems to me that just seems self-evident, that I don't understand why there's a need to underline that. Clearly, you wouldn't take the top performers and make them lower-performing to bring them in line. So I don't understand why there's such an emphasis on having to underline that point. That seems just sort of clear as a bell.
It seems clear as a bell to some, but I will tell you that we've sat around this table at times and had feedback from the public with concerns around some of the changes that we've been doing, with the concern that it might lessen the expectations for the community as a whole.
So to actually work on lowering the performance, to bring them in line, that seems to me, of course, we see what's going on in the world these days, especially in this country. So I suppose it's not surprising.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you so much, Gabby.
Thank you all.
All right. We are going to, as Gabby finds her comfortable seat behind all of us, move on to new business, which is the first read of proposed changes to policy IKF, which is our graduation requirements. I'm going to turn this to Liz, who's probably going to invite somebody like Gabby or Andrew back to the table. Gabby and Joni are going to come and talk about graduation requirements. So Liz, do you want to give us a two-second update while they find another chair at the table?
Yeah, absolutely. So we got some significant feedback from our educators on what the graduation requirements should be. I really, really appreciate all of the thoughtful feedback and input that we were able to get from our staff here. And Joni has done an amazing job as well. So yes, thank you. And this is sort of like what we came up with collaboratively, and with a lot of their input and track changes as well. So with that, take it away, ladies.
Great, unpack. This is not nearly as exciting to talk about. All right. So just to provide a little bit of background, this is all in the memo that's in front of you, but just to kind of look back to look forward. As you recall, on November 5th, we were all presented with ballot question number two, which eliminated the grade 10 MCAS as a criteria for competency determination for high school graduation, and replaced with the language that districts certify, that students have mastered the skills, competencies, and knowledge of the state standards, and by satisfactorily completing coursework that has been certified by the students' district, specifically that shows mastery of the skills, competency, and knowledge contained in the state academic standards. I feel like I'm getting into EdU speak again. I'm so sorry, Becca. It's right from the statute. I'm reading legal language. And curriculum frameworks in the areas measured by the MCAS high school tests, described in Section 1 blah, 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 which is basically the 10th grade MCAS, which is in mathematics, English Language Arts, and some science area. We were then provided with guidance from DESI about a month and a half later, November 5th to the middle of December, that included some language in support, that really clarified that the districts needed to identify their own individual competency determinations, specifically emphasizing those three content areas aligned to grade 10 standards. And then also sharing that DESI was going to approach this work in three phases: short-term for the class of 2025, medium-term for our current high school students, and then longer-term for our class of 2028. Is that our Frosch class, or 2029? Because, I'm sorry, 2020, okay, 2029, my Logan. So there are going to be three phases of this work. Since that came out, there's been a lot of other chatter at the state level as well. So we will talk about that probably after Joni speaks about the specific competency determination language that the high school staff, department leaders, and Joni led and collaborated on. So you want to talk about that?
Okay, so we are proposing, then, that our competency determination be earning passing grades in grade nine and 10 English, or equivalent courses, passing grades in Algebra I and Geometry or equivalent classes, and earning a passing grade in Biology or Physics, or an equivalent course. We also have/or the completion of a subject area portfolio, which demonstrates mastery of grade-level standards in the content areas delineated above. And those are what I just read, which correspond to previous MCAS exams culminating the 10th grade year.
So in addition to that, the policy that you have is not the competency determination policy, it's the graduation requirement policy. So at the same time, it seemed appropriate that we adjusted the competency determination proposed language to be what Joni has just identified. In addition, Joni made some administrative changes to align the graduation requirements policy language to match what's in the program of studies, and as well added some language to arts requirement to meet mass core or a full year of art, an arts elective in the arts areas, to the graduation requirements. It's probably a good space to provide opportunity for some questions about the competency determination language, or any of those changes to graduation requirements.
Vikram.
I have a question. I'm not clear on the social studies requirement. I see in one place, there must be two years, two of which must be US History 1 and 2, which seems to me be excessive. And later on, it says, one must be US History. So which is the proposed one going forward?
I think you're looking at the difference between what it was and what we're proposing that it be.
Yes, what are we proposing?
That it be two years, including US 1 and US 2.
And what propelled that change?
That's what we've always been requiring. That's what our 10th and 11th.
Two, US 1 and 2?
Yeah, 10th and 11th grade is US 1 and US 2. So we are just cleaning up the language in school committee policy. It's been what we've been doing for decades.
I see, okay. All right, thank you for clarifying.
Yanshun, and then Tori.
Forgive my ignorance. I'm just wondering, what's the fitness for life or living?
Yeah, that's our ninth-grade PE course, our physical education and health course in the ninth grade.
So I'm wondering a little bit about the portfolios and what we think that will look like, or if we don't know this yet, because I've heard that we haven't actually done any MCAS alt, so maybe we don't have background in that. What's the process moving with that?
Yeah, we are developing that process, Tori. And as we're looking at the students in the class of 2025, we're being really thoughtful about how we develop that process. In fact, we had a meeting today with all department leaders and Gabby and Peter to kind of walk through that. But I just want you to know, we're being thoughtful, and I can't tell you exactly what it is.
So you're actually trying to roll that out for 2025?
Yes, we are.
Oh, my gosh. You go. That's awesome. Can I ask one more question? So there's also something on there about waivers. I mean, honestly, as I was reading portfolios and waivers, I feel like I'm looking at what used to be the alternatives to passing the MCAS. And I was wondering, so is that anything in the graduation requirements can be waived, including the competency determination, or are we just talking coursework there? And then, if I can ask one more, can you give us an example of what that might look like, please?
The language specifically refers to the graduation requirements or the distribution requirements. You could find similar language in what is stated in the competency determination, because we say/or equivalent courses, and we say/or portfolio, right? And it is specifically in reference to the graduation distribution requirements. Any course in that list of graduation requirements can be waived. It is rare. A situation could be, for example, when we say Biology, students normally take Biology at Acton, Bucksboro in the 10th grade year. If a student comes in in the 11th grade, let's say, and they didn't have a specific Biology course in ninth or 10th grade, and in previous years passed MCAS, because their class, even though it wasn't called Biology, fulfilled some sort of biological sciences standards, sometimes we would waive that requirement so that the student could stay on grade level with the rest of their peers, and they had met standards. So those are the kinds of situations when a team, including department leader, assistant principal, finally principal, would waive such a graduation requirement. Every once in a while, world language can also be considered based on different circumstances as well.
Other questions, comments?
So my question is, what's the likelihood of what we have here, based on March 13th guidance from the Commonwealth, what's the likelihood of that changing between now and maybe for next year's graduation for class of 26?
I think it's such a good question. It has been a little bit of whiplash going on. So after the department offered some guidance, there was some further conversation at the state level with Governor Healy's office, and she has organized, I don't think she's calling it a task force, but fundamentally a task force to look at graduation requirements. She's intentionally calling it graduation requirements versus competency determination. So that's something that's going to take probably about, I think, Peter, 18 months was at the intended timeline for that study. Basically, her goal is to ensure that all students in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts have some standardized measures for diploma access. And at the same time, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education has a public comment period open right now. I think it's through April 4th, maybe April 6th or April 4th, with some other specific language. So they've provided the statute with all the deletions of MCAS as being the competency determinant. They've added in some language about, and this isn't going to impact the class of 2025, because it's public comment right now, they're not going to land on a decision until, I think, the end of May, maybe May 20th. But there are a couple additions that are different to your question. So one of them is for the immediate impact that, in the limited, there's some language in here, "In the limited circumstance where a district is unable to document a student's prior coursework, a student may earn the competency determination by, one, attaining a qualifying score on MCAS, or meeting the standard for a substituted equivalence that the district certifies that it satisfies the same academic standards." So that's creating, as you can imagine, some discussion across the state, because the vote basically abandoned it, and now there's conversation that maybe for a limited number of students, we might consider using MCAS as part of this public feedback period. Additionally, they're proposing that, beginning with the graduating class of 2027, that the two years of math through 10th grade, two years of English Language Arts, and then the Science, additionally, they're suggesting that the students also show mastery of common core of skills, competencies, and knowledge in US History, which we already have as part of our graduation requirements. It wouldn't be a problem, but that would be a new addition as of the class of 2027. And the last piece that is up for public comment is a completely different pathway that brings MCAS back fully. So...
So the sand is still shifting underneath you, is what you're saying?
I don't know what else to say. So, yes.
That's, I guess the point that I was getting to
Yes, yes.
Was that we are going to potentially vote something next week, and it's very likely going to change you. We may have to come back and revisit this in the future year.
Thank you, yeah.
And the reason I set that up is because of the timeline that we have, we don't have a competency determination and graduation requirement that is in place right now that will work for this year's graduating class. And there are some kids who are on the edge of whether or not they will or will not graduate until we decide what the determination is. So I lay that out, because I like to think about schedule and process. We meet again next week. If there is no significant feedback or questions from the committee, then this will come up for a vote next week. If there is, then it has to go back to Policy Sub, who's not meeting for another couple weeks, and it will get delayed in our vote. So I lay that out to just say, now is the time. Do you have feedback? Do you have questions that are substantive about what's in the language here, knowing full well that it might change, and we might be revisiting this again next year? And if not, then we're probably going to see this next week, which is a quicker turnaround than usual. And Peter is just itching to make a comment now. So please, Peter, what would you like to add?
Yeah, I just want to say, huge thanks to Joni's team. I mean, they've done an incredible analysis of all the students in the high school. And we're working with a cohort of seven students at this point, who may not have met the competency determination by being able to pass MCAS before it was eliminated. We've actually narrowed that, about half of that group will have met the competency determination, because they have completed coursework. And Joni and her team have actually proactively identified pathways for remaining students. It may not be this year for every student, because some students actually were already known, like, it was known that they would not be on a traditional pathway for a four-year graduation. And so that was a dialogue that was already happening with families. And so that was a dialogue that was already happening with families. But what they have identified is what would be that pathway into the future for those students. And for the, I think it was either one or two students, we, you know, really had a good dialogue. It typically is around math. And I know, you know, our math department had, was awesome in the meeting this morning because she even said, well, why don't we go into what we do have for prior MCAS scores? Because we had some students really right on the cusp, but maybe hadn't passed it. And why don't we look at how they had done on some of the different concepts in both algebra and geometry, narrow the standards, and then think about what the student might show to be able to show mastery through that alternate portfolio? So it's not, even the portfolio concept isn't necessarily about a student trying to demonstrate a whole course. It's about demonstrating mastery of the specific concepts that they hadn't have been able to do that before. So we're really at that level nuance of things. And I think Joni and her team have communication plans for all of the families involved and are really looking to be able to start to execute those.
Thanks, Peter. All right. One more round. Questions, comments? Vikram.
So, so if I, if I get this correct, so I mean, the thing is now you have students that are just about to graduate, some of them may or may not, but you've actually been very, very thorough. And there have been seven students that have been found of those, half of those actually are meeting the requirements. So really looking at three or four students that we have to work very closely with. But that seems to be absolutely the, the best possible scenario because we can work hand in hand with them to sort of guide them to where they need to be. So it seems, and then that buys us time really for setting proper graduation, I mean, not, you know, I mean, we're voting next week. But I mean, for, for the following graduation year, we have a lot of breathing room. So, so I think we're in a very good place.
Tori.
So not a language thing for this, but something maybe to stick in the back of our minds once we get this thing passed and everybody can breathe is knowing that we're probably going to iterate some more, what data are we collecting along the way to make sure that we have this where we want it to be? And also to, you know, once we start dealing with whatever changes come our way at the state level, to be able to come back and go, no, this is what we know and this is how things are working and this is what we think works and this is what we think doesn't work. Yeah, that would just be my request. But I appreciate the, the thoughtful approach and looking for many flexible ways. I think we heard that from Leela earlier, you know, what else can you do besides MCAS? Obviously, this is a new way of thinking for us in some ways, and I appreciate your work on this.
Thank you. All right. So I'm just looking around the table. Anyone have any, I'm sort of looking for a sense of the room about being okay to vote on this next week. Great. Yes. Vikram, go ahead.
Just one more thing, because this is, this is very, very important. So am I correct in seeing that basically what we're doing, because I mean, the whole idea is you, you go to high school, you take all these courses, and the courses that you take prepare you for the MCAS, which you subsequently take and pass and previously, and then you would graduate based on your MCAS scores, right? And passing the MCAS. The idea here is the MCAS has been removed, but the coursework that you would take to prep you for the MCAS is still in place. And we're sort of shoring those, that up a little bit more, right? Is that, is that more or less what's happening here? Go ahead.
I actually do have an answer for that. Yes, and one of our concerns is we did not want to make it so easy that, you know, not easy, but we do not want to craft this in such a way that now that the MCAS is not here, that students can essentially be graduated and, you know, sort of like passed along when they weren't really ready yet. So we really worked to be very thoughtful about having something that students can show the competency and also having the flexibility to meet students where they're at and find the best possible solution for bringing them to where they need to be before graduation.
And, and that's really being addressed by shoring up the, the requirements?
Yeah.
I really want to move on. Thank you. We'll, we'll have, yeah. All right. So next item on our agenda is the draft request for proposals for our strategic planning and reorganization consultant. I'll hand this over to Peter quickly to give us an overview of what's in there and what he's looking for from us.
Sure. So based on prior discussions, we want to maintain positive momentum around the idea of pursuing a potential reorganization. We had indicated we would be developing a request for proposals, which is kind of the formal document that would be sent out for potential consultants to bid to work with us around developing a reorganization plan. What we have done, we are at the end of our strategic plan anyway, as of next year. So what we've actually asked for is a successor strategic plan that is centered around the potential reorganization of schools within our district. Because a reorganization of schools is so impactful that it actually requires an entire plan to be able to execute effectively. And if we're going to reorganize our schools, we have to do it in a way that actually improves student learning for kids, right? Like that, that's actually the ultimate goal. I did receive a couple of comments from Tori that I already have incorporated into the next iteration of it. One was being clear that it is a successor strategic plan that we're looking for. Two was around putting up some additional clarity that there's financial boundaries that we need to work within so that we don't leave our community ideating in infinite resources and that we are resource constrained. And that is going to be a limiting factor that we have to have as serious consideration. So this does not require a school committee vote. Excuse me. We are posting this on Monday morning in the central registry and all of the other avenues. We have several vendors that have, you know, expressed interest in possibly working with us on something like this. We will make sure they get copies of it. The turnaround time for this is going to be relatively short. It certainly meets all the required legal turnaround times. But we're looking to have kind of a couple of weeks where vendors get to look at it, ask us some questions. We would respond to questions, but we want final proposals due the week prior to April vacation. And then we're hoping to have a small group be able to meet with kind of our top three vendors that bid. Hopefully, we will get at least three, if not more, and be able to select one as the preferred vendor of choice. And then hopefully enter into a contract with them even as soon as April vacation week with an anticipated start date of May 15th so that we can actually get this moving this year. So we're not waiting until the fall to begin a really significant process. My hope is that over the same period of time, while we're waiting for this request for proposals, we can work with the school committee to actually develop what the steering committee will look like, how that's going to function. And, you know, and start to actually then solicit members of a steering committee from the community so that around the same time that we have a consultant in place, we also have members of a steering committee in place so that we can really begin that early work in May, hopefully around mid-May. That should give, you know, about six to eight weeks of time for that group to start the work and lay out kind of the scope of what's going to happen, start getting information to a consultant so they can do a lot of work over the summer. And that way, when we get back in the fall, a lot of the preliminary work has been done and we're really focused heavily on community engagement. And we have requested that, you know, any consultant that, that bids on this have multiple touchpoints for community members to be able to engage and provide feedback, including various surveys, focus groups, workshops, and/or large presentations that, that people can provide input. So that's the overall scope of it. If you have comments about what you, things that you'd like to see included in that, we do have a very, very fast turnaround time. Sherry's going to be finalizing the document tomorrow so that it can go out Monday morning and we can get this, this process rolling.
Thanks. Ben?
Real quickly, I'm looking at the, the timeline. Is there a contingency plan if the technical proposal that comes in does not meet the requirements of the RFP?
We would probably have to rebid it.
I, I don't, you know, it's, you know, unfortunately, that's kind of.
I'm just speaking from past experience.
Unless you have any suggestions on a contingency plan and you. I, I do think we'll have at least a couple vendors who can, who can help us.
I just want to make sure that we have something to go on and with an aggressive timeline as this is.
Yeah, we want to send this out widely and cast the biggest net we can for really good qualified consultants who have done work like this. And we know of some that have already done this work in similar communities. And so as part of the development of the RFP, I actually met with several different consulting groups to be able to talk to them about what our proposal was, receive feedback about things that we might be thinking about including. And, you know, and then we will be sending this out widely to everyone to be able to pursue. This is not something that's out of the realm of possibility. There are actually multiple vendors doing this work in other communities even as we speak.
Sounds good. Thank you. Yenchen.
Totally possible. I missed it, but like, do you have an idea of like estimated cost?
Not yet. That will come in with the proposals. I do think there's an opportunity. Part of the benefit of splitting it over two years, too, is to not incur all of the cost in FY '26. We always have some type of a turnback at the end of a fiscal year. And so if we can use some of the turnbacks at the end of this year to offset costs, it actually lessens the impact on the FY '26 budget, which keeps resources more available for other priorities that we have next year.
Any other comments? So reminder, there's fast turnaround on this, so if you do have any other comments or feedback on that RFP, please get them to Peter by tomorrow. All right. Noting the time and the fact that we're going to be meeting a week from tonight, I am going to suggest that we pass over item eight in our agenda, which is all of our ongoing business. And we can address that next week, which would be subcommittee updates and liaison updates and our school committee goal update. Any objection to that? Didn't think so. So we're on to our consent agenda. As a reminder, items on the consent agenda do not usually require discussion or approve with one vote unless a member would like to have an item held. If you'd like to have it held, you say, hold. The following items, so let's see, what do I say? There's, there's some, one piece of language in here. Members don't have to attend a meeting to, yeah, okay. So item A on the consent agenda is approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 2825. Item B, approval of the ABRSC meeting minutes of 22725. Item C is FY '25 budget transfers. And item D is approval of warrants as presented in the packet 31325 with a recommendation to approve them. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Ben and Leela will go with. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed, abstentions? That's unanimous. Thank you all. Item 10 on our agenda is a motion to. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Becca, Becca totally made that motion to adjourn. Ben seconded that. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstentions, unanimous. Thank you all. Have a wonderful evening.